...and seven. We did not meet yesterday due to lobbying trip up in Sacramento to bring resources back to Los Angeles from some of the state bonds and state issues, and that was a very successful trip yesterday, and want to thank the members who were part of that delegation. We meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday here in City Council. The John Farrow Council Chambers is where we meet at 10 o'clock, except for the first Friday of the month, we meet at Van Nuys City Hall, and we invite members of the public to join us here in Council Chambers or via television, and we welcome our viewers on Channel 35 where we are broadcast live on LA City View through the city's cable system. We're rebroadcast in the evening as well, and we are available via the Internet through the city's homepage at la-city.org where you can click on live streaming webcast video of our council meetings. Lastly, if you're not close to a television or a computer, you can always call in using our City Council's audio service called Council Phone, and that's at 213-621-CITY, and you can listen to the audio proceedings of our City Council meetings or any of our committee meetings. Our agendas are also available online at la-city.org or in the back of the Council Chambers here or through the City Clerk's office, and we have items divided into items that are agendized for public comment if they have not received a public hearing in committee, or items that are not agendized for public comments if they've already had their public hearing. All items before the City Council will receive a public hearing either in committee or the full council. Finally, we have a section of the meeting each time for general public comment on items that are under our jurisdiction but have not been agendized for that day, and you can give public comment, two minutes per speaker, to the City Council on those issues that are pressing and of concern to you. Want to thank the council members who are here pursuant to our own council rules on time. Council members Gruel, Labange, Parks, Perry, Rosenthal, Smith, Zine. We currently have eight members, and we are waiting Councilmember Hahn to join us, we are waiting for Councilmember Reyes to join us, we're waiting for Councilmember Weiss to join us, and we are waiting Councilmember Wesson to join us. Councilmember Cartonius is excused to arrive at 10:30, and Councilmember Weezer is excused on city business for the entire meeting. So again, if Councilmembers Hahn, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson will join us as soon as possible, we will be able to begin our meeting. Want to thank everybody for their patience while we wait for those council members to arrive. Thank you, Councilwoman Hahn, for joining us. We're still waiting Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. Councilmember Reyes, if you'll make your way down to Council Chambers so we can begin our meeting. Councilmember Weiss, if you will please join us, we are waiting you, and Councilmember Wesson, if you'll make your way down as soon as possible. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cartonius, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present and accord, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Zine seconds. If there's no objection, those are approved. Next item?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Parks moves, and Mr. Labange seconds. If there's no objection, those commendatory resolutions will be approved as well. Next order of business?
Mr. President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Let's do a salute to the flag. I know we usually do that on Tuesdays, but first meeting of the week. If I can ask everybody in Council Chambers to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and Ms. Hahn, would you be nice enough to lead the Pledge of Allegiance for us?
Of course. Please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag. Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. If we can run through the agenda first?
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there's a request to continue item number 30 for two weeks, and the new date would be March 7th.
Okay. Colleagues, is there any objection to continuing item 30 for two weeks till the 7th of March? If not, so ordered. And we also have, I think, requests to continue 58, 59, and 61.
Yes, those are closed session items. There's a request to continue item 58 to March 7th also.
Okay, I had February 27th.
There's a change in that. The city, the fire department can't make it on the 27th.
March 7th, if there's no objection for item 58, we'll continue that, and 59?
And 59 and 61 would be February 27th.
Okay, if there's no objection, colleagues, those items will be continued. All right, first batch of items, please.
On the regular agenda, item number one is an item notice for public hearing, and the applicant consents to continuance to March 28th.
Okay, colleagues, if there's no objection, we'll consent to that request to continue till March 28th, item number one. Next item?
Item number two is also a public hearing item, and the applicant consents to continuance to March 7th.
Okay, colleagues, any objection to that? If not, we will continue item number two till March 7th. Next items, please.
Next items are public hearing items protest against various street or alley vacations, and there is a card, I believe, on item number four.
Okay, we will call that special for a card from the public.
And on the other items, if there are no protests, the council can instruct the city engineer to proceed.
Okay. Colleagues, is there any objection, or we should call those special? If not, let's take those up together. Three, five, and six. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, we will instruct the city engineer to proceed on those. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items seven through 29. Item seven is a commissioner, do we wish to hold that on the desk?
All right, others? Specials, colleagues, on these items?
And, Mr. President, also just to let council know, on item number 23, a communication from the CRA has been distributed to the council members that also includes a resolution for council's adoption, so if there's a motion, council can just adopt that resolution in addition to the committee report.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and move that. Ms. Gruel, second. Specials, Mr. Reyes?
Item 19, please.
19 for Mr. Reyes. Mr. Smith?
Item 10, just for roll call vote, please.
Okay, number 10 for roll call vote. Mr. Smith, if there's no objection to that, it'll be roll call vote. Mr. Parks?
Number nine and number 24.
Nine and 24. Mr. Parks. All right, other specials, colleagues? Let's hold seven on the desk as a commissioner. Item number, we're not quite on 30, but as soon as we, we actually continued that till the 7th of March, Mr. Labange. We can reconsider that if you'd like to discuss that. On the remainder, any specials? If not, please take the balance, prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
It's approved. If there's no objection, we'll go forthwith on item 11.
Mr. President, since number 10 was called special for a roll call vote, do you wish to take up 10 at this time?
Sure, let's go ahead and do that roll call vote on number 10. Okay. Do you want to do an oral roll call, or you just meant to slow it down so everybody? Okay, all right. Here's item number 10. Folks, is it a living wage ordinance? If we open the roll? Close the roll?
Not coming up.
Sorry, it's not coming up? All right, hold on, keep it open. Is it, the roll open?
Yes.
Okay, everybody got their vote in? And close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, three noes.
That is approved, and if we can send that forthwith, if there is no objection to that. Okay? Next batch of items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 31 through 55. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Colleagues, any specials on those items? We, sorry, we have had public hearings on those, or we haven't?
These are, have not had public hearing, and I believe there's a card on 33.
Thirty-three, we have cards, and we'll open and close the other ones. Mr. Smith?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five for Mr. Smith. On the balance, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please. Forty-nine, forthwith, if there's no objection, and 53. Okay?
Next items, Mr. President, are the closed session items 56, 57, 60, and 62. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please, let's hold the closed item, closed session items on the desk. Next items?
Do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Sure, let's go ahead and take public comment now. Like to invite first forward Dave Thompson, and after that will be Lucille Caruso. Welcome, Mr. Thompson.
Hi, I'm Dave Thompson, and I'm a community activist, and in case you think I get up here angry all the time, that's not the case. I've commented to C. Garcetti on how he's transformed Hollywood from a slum into a beautiful city. I complained about the sidewalks being in front of the Chinese theater being blocked by promoters, and he stopped that pretty much. I've complimented Mr. Rosenthal for returning public access to the public. But I have an issue here with the county supervisor, Tony Nova, I don't know, Tony Antonovics. Saturday morning, I went out where I live, and this young woman had a beautiful black child, less than a year old, and the black child was on the sidewalk, and this woman was physically, emotionally abusing this child, and I just went into a rage. Frankly, I told her she was a bitch. And then I opened the paper, and I saw where the head of the rescue mission was complaining that Mr. Mike Antonovics, county supervisor, was sabotaging his efforts to move these children and his home to a beautiful site in the valley. What we have in this nation is government of the rich, for the rich, and by the rich, because it takes a massive amount of money to buy the TV spots to get elected. So Mr. Mike Antonovics is catering to the rich residents of this valley home, this valley site. We have these poor children in the rescue mission, vulnerable and possibly going to be killed. So I prepared this flyer, and if necessary, I'll have, send a postcard to all of his constituents. County Supervisor Mike Antonovics is killing our children, is killing our children. He's ignoring the global drug crisis, and he refuses to help the children in the Union Rescue Mission find better housing. I don't stand by and watch our children be abused by the rich people. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Garcetti, you might listen to me.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, we appreciate that. And if I could just remind folks to please keep their conversations to a minimum, or take them either behind chambers or outside of chambers, it will help us. Lucille Caruso is our next speaker, and then Arnold Sacks.
Mr. Garcetti, I'm discussing the configuration of the flow of traffic on Hollywood and Highland with the S configuration, and I had noticed-
Could you get a little closer to the microphone? I'm sorry, we'll try to turn up the volume too, so we can hear you.
I'm talking about the configuration of the movement of traffic on Hollywood and Highland going up towards West Hollywood, and in evacuation, it doesn't look like it's awfully packed, and oftentimes I see ambulances trying to get through or police cars, and it's very thick. And I hope that it could be addressed, especially with the Academy Awards coming up, okay? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, and I know Mr. Labange and our office are working on improvements at Franklin and Highland to help assist in some of that, but we appreciate those comments very much. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker, and then Greg Fuentes will be after him.
Good morning, council members. How are you today? I was up here to comment on the mayor's plan to hire police officers, 1,000 police officers, and I'm referring to some articles in the LA Times. On January 8th, it was reported that the city recruited more than 500 officers, but lost 360 due to departures, for a net increase of 140. Is the city currently recruiting, a recruiting goal of 500 officers a year, and then mayor's new plan is to recruit 1,000 over five years, is that an additional 200? Will the garbage fee that's been passed to aid in this recruitment, will that only be held over for the five years of the mayor's plan? And what happens after five years? And I'd like to continue something. Is the 360 departures, is that a valid number on a yearly basis? If that's the case, then the net between what the city recruits at 500 and what number leaves the department, leaves a balance of 140, and it'll take seven years to reach 1,000 new officers. Could we get some clarification on that from the public, whatever public department is involved in the recruitment of the police officers?
Sure.
It would certainly help, just instead of having numbers thrown out by the newspaper and having the public left in the dark, and thank you very much for your time.
And my deputy's on the way to give you some of that information right now, Mr. Sacks. Thank you. Greg Fuentes?
Excuse me, sir. It's not for my information, it's for the general public.
No, absolutely.
I'm just bringing the question up.
Sure, but you can help us disseminate that. Thank you. Greg Fuentes, and then Sharon Brewer out in the valley will be our next speaker. Mr. Fuentes?
Good morning, council members.
Good morning.
Are you hearing me okay? Excellent.
Thank you.
As I have mentioned previously in these council chambers, the city of Los Angeles residents pay hundreds of millions of dollars annually to cable operators. The city collects $20 million a year in franchise fees related to cable television. Yet, if my recent experiences with Time Warner Cable telephone response practices are representative of those other Angelenos are experiencing, we are having hold times that far exceed what is contemplated in federal and local law. Apparently, $20 million doesn't go as far as it used to go. In a November 16th letter to this city council, ITA's interim general manager, Ken Simmons, stated, "The city's only method for addressing violations of federal and state standards is imposition of penalties," end quote. Yet, what I see is that the Board of Information Technology Commissioners and ITA almost never imposes monetary penalties for the thousands of complaints that cable customers in Los Angeles file with ITA. Now, there have been some occasions where the city's collected money for rate regulation in cable TV, and also maybe the Time Warner Cable transfers of a couple of years ago to a year ago, but there we rely on outside consultants. In any case, I question why we, why city residents file so many complaints, and the city takes so little action on these complaints. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is out in Van Nuys, Sharon Brewer. We can go out to Van Nuys City Hall.
Hi, my name is Sharon Brewer. Attention CD 6, Lake Balboa, unsafe for the public, bikes, scooters, roller skates, illegally parked cars. Three and a half years, safety issues ignored by CD 6. Sunday, February 18th, I arrived at Lake Balboa around 8:50 a.m. to walk around the lake looking for fishing lines and hooks. Parking lot number three by the lifeguards. 11:05, noticed first illegally parked car on the grass. The owner of this car has a remote control boat that he uses to try and hit the birds in the lake. 2:30, 2 p.m. to 3 p.m., 10 illegally parked cars on the grass. 3:10, 3:20, two more illegally parked cars, one on grass. 3:40, three more cars parked on the grass where wildlife are. 3:40, called Office of Public Safety regarding now approximately 15 illegally parked cars, 14 on the grass, parking lot number three. While waiting for the Office of Public Safety, observed 15 more illegally parked cars. 4:10, OPS drove by a car that was parked, was backed in on the grass, not parked parallel to the road, and proceeded to parking lot number two. 4:30 p.m., I called OPS regarding the illegally parked cars on the grass, and was told they would contact the officers. I left the park at 5:48 and never saw anyone from the Office of Public Safety. I don't know how many other cars were illegally parked at the park because I was waiting by parking lot number three. 4:01:07, Persian New Year event, fourth year at the lake. I requested a copy of the inside permit for this event, and was told by Recreation and Parks that they hope to have a first draft ready sometime in two weeks. That could be around March 7th. Leaving approximately 24 days before this event, obviously Recreation and Parks is trying to keep this event a secret. How is the public supposed to know anything about this event if Recreation is not letting them know what's going to happen to the park since last year this event promoter was allowed to close half of the park to the public and charge them $5?
Thank you very much, Ms. Brewer. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins is our next speaker here, and then Oscar Johnson.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Ms. Hawkins. This letter is addressed to the City of Los Angeles Council Board and our FBI Department Police. As I have reserved and listened very carefully to my birds whom I fed out of my own window, it is assured that Annie Nicole Smith is alive in Los Angeles, California, in the area of Victorville Street, of the 600 block area of Los Angeles. I would like to plead a call now to Ms. Annie Nicole Smith. Please surrender in now. No more trying to be the funeral home faker, just living in a unknown, unseen society of view and living.
Mr. President, appears she's not speaking within a topic, within a jurisdiction of the city?
Thank you for that information about Annie Nicole Smith, but we have to make sure what we can do about the city under our jurisdiction, so please, if you can limit your comments then.
Well, I'm at the end, end of comments now. My question again is to all of you, is to give up, don't harm any longer what you have achieved. Will it last any longer? Thank you very much. My name's Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Oscar Johnson is our final speaker.
Morning, my name's Oscar Johnson. I'm active for the homeless, and I still think we need more positive things for the homeless, more education, more jobs. And down on Crenshaw and 39th, 38th, I think the city have put too many business in that small area like Walgreen, Dennis, and Big Five. People don't have any place to park, and I don't think they respect this law, what they call red zone law, and I just think we need to bring the troops out of Afghanistan and Iraq and send the troops home before America go into other soil illegally invading other countries. And the mayor of Los Angeles have a lot of city cars running around the city unofficial. They're not taking care of city business, and they're leaving the city, leaving the city, the mayor office unofficially, and not leaving city business. And we have numerous unsolved murders in Los Angeles pertaining to African-American people that the police department have not follow up on, and they have presented $50,000 in reward, no never marked money, it's not going no place. They're far off their job, and they're very, and we are very fraudulent in deceiving people of our good intention, and we don't have good intention. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. That's our final public speaker for tonight, today, for our general public comment, so we will close public comment and return to the agenda. First item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to take up the commissioner at this time? It's confirmation of Mr. J. Richard Liner to the North Valley APC.
Since we have two cards on item four, why don't we take those first, and then we'll come back to number seven with the commissioner? So if we can ask Nikolaus to come forward, and Charlotte Nielsen after that. Nikolaus?
Charlotte's gonna pass her time to my, to me.
Okay. If you can, we can't actually pass time, so it's just two minutes per speaker, my apologies, that's the, fortunately, the council policy.
Hello, Mr. President and council members. My name's Nick Kalachis, and thank you for helping me out with my vacation and my property and my easement. In the, first of all, thank you for that approval, and second, there are two conditions that I have a problem with. The first one is condition number eight that says a street light to be put inside the, I mean, in front of my property. I have two already. Now, sometimes if they go up there and take a look, they'd see them, but I have an example here that I can give you that shows I have not one, but two on each side of my property. I'm one of the lucky ones in the hills, but we certainly don't need a third one. Sometimes these things maybe are just boilerplates, and I have pictures of them as well, and these boilerplate things can be unnecessary, they can be unreasonable expenses, and sometimes even detrimental. The second one that I have a problem with is a condition to add a manhole, a construction of a new sewer facility. I'm the only property left in the area of the hills. I'm the only one. There's a manhole right in front of my property. Do I need to put another one in right next to it, two feet away? It's already there, there are no other vacant lots. Now, this is an unnecessary expense, and I guess if they had gone up and seen it, maybe perhaps the findings would have been different, maybe they're just boilerplates, but I'd like that condition possibly removed, because it certainly is detrimental, because the neighbors in the area are gonna have to deal with all the parking and the construction trucks to put a manhole in. Now, lastly, why don't we put a condition that is actually beneficial, not detrimental? I'd like to trade this for putting speed bumps in that are desperately needed on my street, and I'd be more than happy to pay for them. They're not too expensive, they're reasonable, and they're necessary, and thank you for this consideration.
Thank you very much. And so Charlotte will be passing her card up? Does Charlotte want to speak?
No, no, I'm-
We're good, okay.
I'm good.
Okay, there's no problem, that closes our public comment.
Do you want copies of these at all?
Yeah, if you give that to Sergeant Arms, Mr. Weiss can look at them. Okay, we'll hold that on the desk. Mr. Weiss is asked to hold that on the desk. We'll deal with those concerns. Thank you. We can go to item number seven now.
Thank you.
Item number seven is confirmation of Mr. J. Richard Liner to the North Valley APC.
Okay, Mr. Liner'd like to come forward. Welcome back. Please come to the table down here. If you come, come around, you can come to the table here, and I'd like to recognize the Chair of our Planning Land Use Management Committee, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Liner sits down. I first want to thank him for stepping up and serving the city in this capacity. Would you like to just share with my colleagues your background and your goals as a candidate for this body?
I've been very involved in the community for the last 25 years, having served as president of my neighborhood council. I'm past Chairman of the United Chambers of Commerce, Encino Chamber of Commerce, I chair a child development institute, and I happen to be in the real estate business. I'm very anxious to see the North Valley improve in its status and see the turn to getting more and more improvements in the northeast, northeast valley. I have been working with some of the council folks in an attempt to see that these things happen, and I'm working with Valley Economic Development Center and working with them to see some improvements earned in the northeast valley. So my goals are really pretty simple. Having been President of the Neighborhood Council, I'm more balanced with homes and business as, as most people, more so than most people who are really in one area. I am fairly broad in my, my understanding of what needs to be done, and I'm looking forward to an improved San Fernando Valley and therefore an improved city.
Just one question. In terms of densities and the housing crunch we're in, how do you see the city absorbing the housing and addressing this incredible crunch that we feel as a city, this need for housing in your area? How do you see it fitting in?
I see some areas that have been left in very poor condition that need to be regenerated, and I think they could be generated by, by housing in the northeast valley. I see the transit zones having homes, mixed use developments, and I see that as a big, a big issue. The transit zones, I think, are very important, and I think the redevelopment in northeast valley and Pacoima, our leader, will take care of a lot of the housing that we need.
Thank you, sir, again. I want to thank you for your contribution. Again, I want to thank you for your contribution and your support for the city. I look forward to working with you, and I encourage an I vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Our next speaker is Mr. Smith, followed by Mr. Cardenas, Ms. Grule, and Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Ms. President. I'm certainly pleased to stand up in support. I, when, when he called and said, you know, I have to come see you're my councilman, I got an appointment, I said, don't waste your time, you got my vote. And the reason for that is I've known Richard Leiner for a very long time, and his wife, Barbara Lozier, family that has involved at every level of the San Fernando Valley, from business community, the chambers, to social programs, to programs for youth and kids, just a great compliment to the San Fernando Valley and your commitment to the valley. And you certainly know enough about the valley, in particular in land use and your role in the chambers, et cetera, but also in, in commercial development, that you will be an outstanding commissioner. I think this is one of the mayor's best appointments. There's not a better voice of the San Fernando Valley to choose from, and from your breadth of involvement. So I congratulate you. Thanks for coming down. Thank you for your willingness to serve the city of LA, which you fought with a little bit over the years, but I think that's the best kind of voice to have there, a voice that's going to understand the needs of the valley, but also the needs of the city of LA. So thank you for wanting to serve, and I'm very proud to have you as a commissioner. Good luck.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas is our next speaker.
Mr. Leiner, I think you caught Angelino's attention when they're watching this, and as a Realtor myself, I can imagine how the average Joe or Jane watching this might think, oh, my gosh, a Realtor on a planning commission? That's terrible. But let me ask you a simple question so that they can understand that it's a good thing that a Realtor would be on a planning commission. Now, if you, as a Realtor, saw a community of 10,000 houses and condos and apartments in this one little neighborhood that was badly planned, a little too tall here, no, kind of mixed and matched or what have you, as a Realtor, would you prefer to get your hands on 10,000 units of the picture I just painted, or would you rather deal with or work with a neighborhood that has 1,000 units only, a better planned, much nicer planning and much more logical planning? Which one, as a Realtor, is more appealing?
Well, I think I can go back to my neighborhood council involvement. I was president of the neighborhood council for two years, and three years prior to that, I was involved with that same council, which further became certified later on. And one of the reasons I was able to succeed is I had to balance between the homeowners and the, and the, and the business community, which allowed me to continue, and that's why I think they kept electing me. The answer to that question is it depends a lot on where the area is and what's going on in that area. I would like to go to that probably different answer than you, you expected, but I would go to that 10,000 square, 10,000-foot area and see what we can do to make that more livable. As far as where the 1,000 homes are concerned or units are concerned, that would be something I would look into, but I really would like to make it more comfortable for the 10,000 people. I see houses jammed against each other, no, no businesses nearby, no, no buses nearby. I think that needs a lot of attention. The 1,000, they have a nice community, and, and we can build upon it, but I think that the answer is to do better things for the 10,000 homes.
Now, let me ask the question a little differently and simpler. Not as a, not as a planning commissioner looking at prospective projects, but I'm just saying, you're a Realtor, you, you go to an appointment, and in the middle of this 1,000 units of well-planned community, say there's a busy corridor with some retail, but the housing, it looks balanced. And then you go to an appointment to go see a home that's in that 10,000 unit, not well-planned, kind of incongruent. Which one is, do you, do you enjoy working with more?
Well, of course, the answer would be in the 1,000 unit area.
But that's my point. The point that I'm trying to make as a former Realtor myself, people think because you, you deal with sales of homes or you, you do business selling units or what have you, a lot of people think, and incorrectly, that Realtors or people who are developers or what have you, all they want is just massive units, and they don't take into consideration the entire community. That's my point.
Okay. My history would indicate that I stopped several developments on Ventura Boulevard, which is my main area of doing business, because I felt that it was not best for the homeowners and best for the community. For example, on the corner of Louise and Ventura, at one time, they were talking about putting in a Jiffy Lube, and I said, you're just not, and it happened to be for my office. And I said, I'm going to vote it down, because it doesn't belong in the heart, the actual heart of Encino belongs off that area. And I ruined a sale for somebody or a deal for somebody, but it turned out to be the right move, and that's what I'm concerned about.
Well, thank you. You gave the perfect answer, because I think it's important that the people who are on our commissions and people who are in public office or what have you, that we have the ability to go beneath the superficial idea that somebody might be thinking, oh, I know where he's going to vote, or I know where she's going to vote, and look below the surface and realize that, that good people who are considerate actually go below the surface and say, you know, even though this is going to hurt somebody who's a friend, what's best for the community is really what matters.
I think you'll see that.
So you gave a perfect example where somebody that you knew was going to get one less sale or what have you, they might have taken it personally, but the right thing for the community was to say no to that project and say, it's not the right fit. Thank you very much. I support you. That's exactly the dialogue that I think we should have with our commissioners, knowing that they're here to do what's right for the community, not for themselves. By the way, for those people watching, this man is going to dedicate tens and hundreds, and eventually, over time, 1,000-plus hours for free to the community. So thank you very much ahead of time for all of that commitment. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Now that you heard the number of hours, it's not too late to, okay. Ms. Grule is our next speaker, and then Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Richard, thank you so much for your willingness to serve on the APC. This is really where the rubber hits the road, so to speak, in our communities where there are a lot of discussions about people's quality of life and how important it is. And I know that from your perspective, you take a very balanced view, and I appreciate that, that you're going to look at all sides and, and really try to address issues that are of concern to the city, and at the same time, make sure that we are preserving the quality of life for our, our neighborhoods. So I hope that this, this kind of discussion doesn't just occur when you're being appointed, but also as you have experience serving on that commission, that you can come back to us and say, you know, here's some things that need to be changed. Here are some policy issues that need to be addressed. Here are some problems with the, the current zoning or general plan or ways in which we can do things better, because I think that's really a critical point of having a commissioner like you, is that your breadth of experience is going to add to, I think, that community in this APC. So I really wanted to not grill you today, although I did tease you that I would, but more importantly, just stand up and say that I wholeheartedly support your nomination and, and look forward to your involvement there, and, and condolences for all the hours. Sorry to your wife of how many hours you're going to be spending at the APC, but thank you very much for your willingness to serve. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Mr. President, Richard, have you ever received any significant awards for what you've done for the community?
Yeah, I think so.
Which one?
I won the Fernando Award last year as a volunteer, lifetime volunteerism.
And all the activities you've been involved in over the years, the Child Development Institute, the AIDS Program?
I have 160 awards.
160 awards?
Yes.
I think that speaks for your commitment and your dedication to the people of the San Fernando Valley and the city of Los Angeles. I know that I saw you shopping a couple days ago with your lovely wife with you, and they talk about a good womb behind a man. You got a lovely wife who's there with you.
Thank you.
All the time. So you know you've got my support. I know we met many, many years ago when I was first thinking about running for political office.
Yes.
So our friendship has lasted for many, many years. But your commitment to the people of Los Angeles and the San Fernando Valley is very significant. You'll enjoy this commission. It's challenging, it's exciting, and I'm sure you'll enjoy it. So congratulations to you, Richard.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo what everyone has said, Richard. Congratulations to you on, I think, Dennis, this will be honor number 161. Except this one's going to cause a lot more sweat and, and hours of your life than probably all those 160 put together, but thank you for doing this, Richard, and I look forward to your service.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss, and I'll add my, my note of congratulations as well, Richard. We're very lucky to have you nominated by Mr. Virgosa, and anticipate a unanimous vote, so let's make it official. Let's please open the roll on the nomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Please, a round of applause for our new commissioner.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number nine, and that was called special by Council Member Parks.
Mr. Parks, number nine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I go on that item, let me just introduce, we have a young lady here monitoring every activity and wonders daily where I go every day, and I want to introduce Commissioner Bobby Parks is here today. On number nine, what I'd like to do is move the item, but ask that when we have our next closed session, which is, I guess, next Wednesday, that we direct the city attorney and DWP to come in and explain to the council this possible litigation dealing with the legal validation issue. So just that we understand it, but we moved the item today.
Absolutely. Okay.
And, Mr. Parks, that would be next Tuesday?
Tuesday, whatever.
Wednesday will be in San Pedro or Wilmington.
All right, whenever we have the next one here.
Okay, so we'll aim for next Tuesday, the 27th. All right? And on the rest of it, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is number 19, and that was called special by Council Member Reyes.
All right. Mr. Reyes, we have item number 19 before us. Proposition O.
Thank you, Council President. Is anyone from the department who's working on this?
The Bureau of Sanitation or Engineering?
Please, please hold my time.
Sure.
Well, first, I want to thank the staff for all their hard work. It's been a ramp-up time that's taken, you know, its toll in many different ways, but the product, I think, is going to be a good one. One of the questions I have, and this is about leveraging, yesterday in Sacramento, we were talking about how we use our funds, what we expect to get an unfair share from the state resources. One of the driving lines that the mayor, Virgosa, was stating, and those of us meeting with different elected officials at the state level, is that we, the city of LA is putting their money where their mouth is. Our own funds are being used to deal with these statewide issues. This is a regional issue. In our Prop O strategic moves and how we're funding, are we using our dollars to the extent that we can so that we can attract more dollars from the state, given how much is being spent for each project? And could we be using more of these dollars for the river developments throughout the city? So if you can answer those two questions, I appreciate that very much. Please hold my time.
Good morning, Sean Carrigan, Bureau of Sanitation. Councilmember, the answer is yes. Obviously, all the grants that you're referring to do require matching fund, and Proposition O would be a good source for our matching fund to go and maximize the likelihood of receiving, you know, extra money from other sources. In fact, from Proposition 50, Chapter 8, as you know, we have received $10 million because we had matching fund from Prop O, and we have also received money from consolidated grant, Prop 40, and other 3, 4 million dollars, and we would continue to be asking for other monies through ERWIM and Proposition 84 and 1E.
If you were to look at each project, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Kendra Coqueta, Bureau of Engineering, I just want to add, second part of your, your second question, that the Prop O implementation team will be working very closely with the LA River revitalization, revitalization team to optimize Prop O funds and leverage those funds and go after those state funds that are available for water quality improvements.
It's good to hear. The, if you were to look at each project's being funded, is there a way to determine how much of each project, how much each project is actually being used in terms of Prop O? In other words, for every project that we are funding today, is Prop O funding 100%, 80%, 70%? Do you have a sense for that, and how much state dollars or other dollars are being used to finish those projects? Do you have a feel for that?
Councilmember, not to that precise point. Usually, if we get one-third from outside agency, we have done a great job, and two-thirds from city sources, but I don't have a specific number for a specific project.
So for the most part, the projects that are being funded on this list, up to two-thirds, if not more, are Prop O funds?
Yes.
So what does it take to change that ratio? Because shouldn't we be using less of Prop O and more of other dollars if we're truly leveraging the funds that we have that are precious little dollars that we have from Prop O? Should we be attracting more state funds as opposed to spending more Prop O funds in singular projects?
Yes, Councilmember, but that would require actually a policy lever that we work with Sacramento to legislate and earmark money for Southern California, Los Angeles. The monies that I'm speaking about, these are competitive grant. I get, I send my proposal against so many other proposals at competitive level, and I'm receiving those monies. The money such as SAPO that received $300 million, it requires a policy at your level and mayor's office to go to Sacramento and legislate and earmark money for Southern California, and I think we deserve, based on our population and water quality, to receive. Historically, in my view, we have not received our fair share.
Well, let me put it in the context. The Speaker of the Assembly represents a portion of my district in the city of LA. The, the majority leader represents the northern part of my district that's also in the Assembly. I would hope that as a result of this dialogue, that you can give us language that will allow us to strengthen our position so we can get ahead of the line at the state funding level and actually challenge the other municipalities, the other counties, and try to do what we're doing. And the mayor said this very clearly yesterday, that we should be ahead of the line because we are putting our monies on the table, and they should be matching us, given the proportion amount that we are delivering, given how much we've already put on the table. It just seems to me that once we vote on this, the funds that we have, what little we have, is going to be spent, and that's never going to come back. Would that be true?
It really, Councilmember, depends on our effort. We still have time, as you know, 84 and 1E is before us, and the time scheduled for both of those grants is in fog. If we make a concerted effort to go to Sacramento and make sure there is some earmark, I think the chances are high. If not, you are correct.
I would, if you can provide language, I would, I would work with the Chair of the Committee to essentially put together a motion or a resolution that our state officials can take back to Sacramento that reflects the strength of this city and how direct we've been and how efficient we've been in dealing with these mandates, and how we're putting our money on the table so we can get a greater percentage of our own state funds back into our respective neighborhoods. So is that a commitment I can get from you?
Yes, I would be happy to work with CLA, CAO, and your office and others to prepare a position paper on the, on the earmarking of funds for us, for Southern California.
Thank you, sir. Again, congratulations on your hard work. I think it's important that we start understanding in layman terms how we are going to be cleaning our water bodies, our bodies of water, what these projects can do to meet the test so that we understand the results when we need, when we need to meet our deadlines. 2012, correct?
Yes.
And at that point, we have to meet what levels of, of performance?
The number of TM deals, Councilmembers, you know, by 2012, we would have more than 60 TM deals. Each one of them have different deadline, but at, for the metals and bacteria, we should have made 25% reduction.
So we're showing positive progress in terms of meeting these mandates?
You are correct, Councilmember. We have made trash TM deal deadlines, so as dry weather bacteria TM deals.
Thank you very much, sir. Again, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Garcetti, followed by Ms. Hahn, and then Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Reyes, for your help in passing Proposition O and leadership on water issues. And Ms. Perry, again, thank you as well for making this day even possible. I know some of the folks who serve on our COAC and, and members out there who passed this historic bond when very few thought it could be passed, and it was the second highest vote in city history after the zoo bond, I believe. So animals and water, people like, just a note for the future. And we were yesterday up in Sacramento, and I know, as Mr. Reyes and others of us were up there, and we sat down talking to legislators about Proposition 84 and 1E. up there, and we sat down talking to legislators about Proposition 84 and 1E, and we met with Daryl Steinberg, the senator who is head of the Natural Resources Committee. The fact that we're a self-help city that has stepped up on Prop O means a lot to them because they have dollars that are waiting, and other areas that didn't deliver as strong votes for these proposals, the infrastructure propositions, now are trying to get that money. They not only didn't vote in as strong numbers as we did, but they also haven't stepped forward with their own self-help. And here, because we have said clean water is a priority, and we will put our money where our mouths are, I think we've really taken national leadership on this. Prop O too, which, you know, as I mentioned in committee before, some are unhappy when we move too slowly because they want the money to be spent out the day after we pass it. Others say it moves too quickly because they want to make sure that it's going towards the best projects for cleaning up our water. I think we've really reached that balance that is right perfectly in between, where we are learning the technology that works at the same time, we're making sure that we move this money out there to clean water as quickly as possible. If you could hold my time, could you just tell Sharam about the TMDLs that we have, the thresholds that we have at this point, the deadlines that we have been given, and where we are on those deadlines, and compare that to other municipalities?
I would be happy to, Councilmember. For trash TMDL, September 30, 2006, we made 20% trash reduction, first in the nation.
What is a trash TMDL?
The trash TMDL is to reduce the contribution of trash from land uses to the upstream, L.A. River, and Bana Creek from an established, you know, baseline. We made that through a three-pronged approach of public outreach, use of technology, and enforcement. For bacteria TMDL for Santa Monica, during dry weather, we have number of low-flow diversion that intercepted the polluted runoff and sending those to our treatment plan. We made that deadline also July 15, 2006. The next, the next step for us, milestone, would be for wet weather that is coming up in 2009, which we are working on.
For the members of public and our friends who are watching on television, Los Angeles is the only city that has done this. We are, we have not only not fought the requirements from federal government, but we have implemented these things called TMDLs, which essentially require us to remove trash and heavy metal and other pollutants from our waterways, from the bays, all the way to the sources that run through our neighborhoods. And I want to thank the city departments that have done such an extraordinary job on that. Today, we're voting on a number of different projects, but 231 million to almost 232 million dollars for six projects, which include two of the most important water quality projects in the city's history, with Lake Machado and Echo Park Lake. With these projects, the city is not only knocking out two of the TMDLs, and we have 67 of these to clean up our waterways, but we've decided to take our destiny into our own hands. In the travels we had yesterday, we are looking for state matches to help us because we know half a billion dollars will not be enough. But I want to speak of just the one project in my district, Echo Park Lake, which I know Mr. Reyes shares as well as the community we both represent. Echo Park is not just a lake, it's a stormwater retention basin, and it has deteriorated over the years. We've had articles in the press about bacteria counts in there. We have looked at different ways of trying to clean the water up, but we haven't really been able to take the entire body of water and do what we need to do. This pollutes the L.A. River downstream, it pollutes the bays, the recreational uses of the lake as well are impossible. So we'll be restoring the lake's water retention capabilities, cleaning the water, and taking the lake off of the TMDL noncompliance list. That's another one we can check off. And thanks to the great work of our project managers, both Sharam and Kendrick, each project has been designed in a way to maximize community benefits. Briefly, we will create a partial wetlands at the northeast corner of the lake, which is really the most polluted area for those of us who live in Echo Park. We see where all the debris fills up. Second, we'll put grassy swales around the lake that will filtrate pollutants and runoff. Third, we're going to put permeable paving, which means paving that absorbs water around the edge of the lake to prevent further, to further filtrate and provide for more retention of runoff. And lastly, we'll put terraces on the inside perimeter of the lake that clean the water within the lake vegetation. And I know the constituents in Echo Park, who are earlier in our area, the Park Advisory Board, people who live right around there who have been calling for a clean lake for years, and really who want a clean neighborhood because it's the filter for the entire neighborhood, are very excited. So I want to thank you for the good work. The taxpayers of Los Angeles can feel really strongly about this package that we're moving forward. Not only does it clean water, it has community benefits tied into that, and represents the very best of the minds we have here, as well as a future where Los Angeles' water supply is finally clean, as it deserves to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I am very happy today, and I think the residents of Los Angeles, the voters who approve Prop O should also be happy today. But I'm really happy, colleagues, because for me today, what is before us is over five years of work just in my office to bring much-needed resources to several areas of the district. And before I was elected in 2001, I knew of the terrible condition at Lake Machado at the Harbor Regional Park, and I learned about the poor condition of the water, the toxic levels which were killing wildlife, the pollution which came from the Wilmington drain into Lake Machado. And then, of course, everyone learned about Lake Machado when we had a very famous resident, briefly, our alligator Reggie. And we don't really know what happened to Reggie. Some people think maybe his demise came as a result of this toxic, polluted body of water which he resided in. And the other thing that was frustrating for me, colleagues, is that I learned about reports that have been written, studies that have been studied, advisory groups that have been put together to say what needed to happen at Lake Machado, and still, nothing ever happened. And then along came Prop O, and it was the great leadership of this council, Councilwoman Perry, Councilman Garcetti, many of us, who really pushed Prop O to the voters. And I used Lake Machado and Cabrillo Beach as poster children for the passage of Prop O, and I think that's a lot of the reason that we got a strong vote for that, is because people knew of the polluted conditions of our water. And the voters approved this in 2004, and then last June, many of you remember, I introduced a motion that said, what's going on? Why aren't we spending this money? Because, you know, when we get the voters' trust to buy in and vote for a bond, then we need to spend the money as quickly as possible. But I know we wanted to do it right, we wanted to make sure we got results, but I will thank COAC for working a little bit harder, with staff working a little bit harder to approve these projects. And today, for my district, we're approving 12 million and setting aside another 100 million to improve Lake Machado and the Wilmington drain. And I think that is so important. This was a great recreational area in previous years, colleagues. This was a lake that people actually canoed on and boated on. It was really a recreational area. That has long passed because of the pollution and the toxic level. This will help dredge the lake, we'll be putting those devices to capture the trash, which is so important as it moves from Wilmington drain into the lake. Will provide landscaping trails, picnic areas, even an off-leash dog park at this area, which is fascinating. I think this will be the single most important improvement project in this park's history, and I want to thank you for recommending this project. We're also approving about 4 million for Rosecrans Park, and this is an area, colleagues, in the North Harbor Gateway area, which you've heard me talk about the gang issues I have in the gateway, and the idea that these kids and these residents have nowhere to go, nowhere to enjoy community centers. And this will provide for cleaning up that park, providing an irrigation system that will help get that park ready for something else, which I've been trying to do, which is get a Dodger Dream Field. And we were waiting for this kind of infrastructure, this kind of improvement to happen on the field, for soccer fields, so that ultimately we can build a Dodger Dream Field for kids to play at. And then, I'm just going to talk on this last project I love, it's $6 million that we're approving today for Peck Park Canyon. Now, this was a project that was actually brought to me by the Neighborhood Council, and I partnered with the Neighborhood Council, who said, if we're ever going to improve Peck Park, these are the 10 things that need to happen. We need to improve the trails, we need to improve the stream, we need to replant with native vegetation, we need to really make this usable by the community. And they're excited today, and I partnered with them to apply for this money. And this Peck Park is getting every single one of the projects that they had asked for and that they saw that would really improve this canyon. So I am very happy today. It's a big day for the residents of the 15th Council District, but really, for all of Los Angeles, as we're actually using this money, we're improving these projects. But Sharam, you know the kind of person I am. I'm going to be driving by these projects on a regular basis. I want to see work happening as soon as possible. I want to see something happening, I want to see the bulldozers there, I want to see the grading, the dredging, the air raiding. I'm going to be driving by these regularly, and please, make this stuff happen as quickly as possible. These projects will show tangible results, which is exactly what we're trying to do with Prop O. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn, and thank you for your efforts as well on Proposition O, as well as those of Mr. Labange. I know he was very active as well, but Ms. Perry is next, then Mr. Labange, and then Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and as Chair of the Energy and Environment Committee and co-chair with Mr. Garcetti on Prop O. I think one of the best things about Prop O was the confidence of the voters to pass this, and I believe one of the key components in that was to have the community oversight board or council reviewing it, so we have real people, not just inside people or bureaucracy or political people, but just real folks who have a stake and an interest as well. And conceptually, it's a good idea. I think that our relationship with the COAC, as it is called, is evolving. I feel comfortable now that it's gone through committee, that people are more on the same page, that it's important to show those who voted for that, for Proposition O, that it is producing. It is producing, we are producing projects, they are coming online, and that we are highly motivated with a sense of urgency about cleaning the quality of our water. And if, if I feel, or it has brought to my attention, that we're not on track, I will certainly bring it back into committee, and we will reassess our relationship again. But thus far, I think that we have made some progress now, and appreciate people's willingness to engage in that dynamic discussion.
Thank you. And now, the great member of the fourth district, Mr. Tom Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you. A couple of questions I wanted to ask. On our Oversight Committee, I want all residents to be Los Angeles, all members to be Los Angeles residents, okay? I think it's real important, because I, in committee, I spoke of, that we have 27 cities that we contract with at High Period?
Yes.
Yet, okay, that's fine, they pay their fee there, but for this fee, maybe Chevy Chase Drive, which is in Glendale, starts in the foothills of Glendale, comes into Los Angeles, Glendale doesn't share in it, but we're paying the cost of this, you know? And I'm, I'm good, I'm not knocking Glendale, but I think there's a relationship you have with the other cities as they all come through our drains. And the biggest thing I want to say is, 80% of the trash that goes out of the ocean comes from the gutters, you know, right there, and we got to fight for better street cleaning, so you don't have to be so sophisticated. Okay, are we going to drink this water when we clean it?
It would be used, Councilmember, for irrigation, you know, and other uses.
Where, where, though?
Mainly on parks, golf courses, you know, freeways, you know?
I know, but where? How are you going to do? What did you figure out so far?
Because we are using what we call distributed BMP-based management practices within the watershed. We have to identify location and have identified the needs, capture, treat, and reuse.
Right. Okay, I just want to show you, this is our storm drains, right? This we're trying to clean up here, right? I don't know if you can see that, I could ask, Avak, would you please give that to the table, set a table? But on these photographs here, you see, if you look, the little grate that you put across it there?
Hold it a little closer to your body, Mr. Labange, and you can see it on TV if you hold it closer to your body, right there.
Well, okay. When you see the gates right there that we have, and the debris that gets there? We're going to ask that we figure something out between Rita Robinson, right? Your chief, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the head of the Bureau of Sanitation does a wonderful job. And Bill Robertson, okay, head of Street Services, street cleaning. The cleaners can't get in there, and this all becomes a problem. I mentioned in committee the other day, I had two and a half lanes, the curb lane, one and two, were full of water right at Hollywood and Garfield, and it was dangerous for people. Yet it was good because we stopped the trash, but it creates another problem. So please look at that, and I want to echo what Ms. Hahn said, there's an urgency to this, if people invest in something, they want to see something. And, you know, it's already February 21st, boom, man, it just goes by fast. So accelerate the activity so that it gets done right, you know, and bring it home to the people, because that's what they want, that's what they voted for. Mr. Garcetti and Ms. Perry, thank you for your leadership on this. I just want to stand tall and fight for street cleaning and figure a way out to help you have less load once it gets in your drains. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gruehl is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and today is an exciting day as approving these projects. I asked some questions when it was in committee a few weeks ago, particularly about ensuring that we can justify all the projects based on TMDL, that we will have people who will look critically at each of these to say, does it reduce, in fact, the TMDLs, which was the basis in which people voted for that Proposition O and Clean Our Water? And I think you were very succinct and direct in suggesting that that does. And as we look through the projects in the future, we do want to make sure that, again, there are a lot of good things that we need to do in the city, but this specifically to focus on those TMDLs and to see how we're doing citywide. I know a lot of projects, Ms. Hahn had some great projects in her district, I think Mr. Cardenas had some in his, but there, and again, doesn't mean, this is not something that I believe we should have in one in every 15 districts. It really should be focused on TMDLs in those areas. And I think, as been mentioned by many of my colleagues, the importance of getting this money out. You know, we fought yesterday, just talking about transportation dollars and the fact that we had fought for this and the bond measure, we wanted to see something happen that impacted our neighborhoods. The same holds true for Prop 42 that was passed before on transportation, and the same holds true for Prop O, that our public wants to see the benefits of them agreeing to adopt this particular bond measure that we had in the city of Los Angeles, and to ensure that our children and grandchildren have clean water in the future. So we had a presentation this morning as well in Energy and Environment Committee, and Ms. Perry's committee, that talked about our efforts and how we could move things more quickly, how the COAC and the AOC can work together, and to bring these projects, again, even more quickly. So just very much the same of what other people have said today, but support these going forward and look forward to more projects coming forward that address TMDLs. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Ms. Gruehl. Mr. Reyes.
Yes, I wanted to drill down a little bit more on what Mr. Labange was observing. If you look at a map and you see where the hot trash spots are located in the city, you'll see them basically a preponderance locations around downtown. The high-impact areas are just northeast, in the Lincoln Heights area, down by the, just east of downtown, the perimeter, Councilmember Perry's district, and we are. The clutter there on our drains are just amazing. But I have yet to see any policy change that goes hand in hand with the introduction of grates. Has there been any policy change that allows us to pick up this trash and debris, either for recycling purposes or for disposal in general? Has there been any discussion about that? Because it's very profound in my district, and I know I say this often, but I need to keep emphasizing. In that part of the district, I have 20,000 people per square mile. In Pico Union, I have 40,000 per square mile. The city averages 6,000. That means I have five, six, seven times the amount of trash building up because I have that many more individuals living there. Not only that, not only living there, but I have the whole region converging in the central core of the city, because that's where downtown is located. So regionally, it's a magnet, which means even more trash. So has there been any policy change in dealing with the buildup of trash on our curbs and gutters?
Councilmember, we know, of course, there is much more to be done.
Please hold my time.
We are making progress, you know, there are a number of issues here. There is one issue of, as you said, water quality and compliance, which the technology is showing. We are working on the recycling part to make sure we identify more material to be recycled. We are working with your committee on plastic and polystyrene to make sure that we find, you know, substitute product for them, and we would increase the outreach to number of our targeted audiences to make sure that, you know, they dispose of this material. So we have made improvements, but there is much more need to be done. We are working with Bureau of Street Services to make sure that we sweep the streets more.
See, that's, I understand the bigger picture issues, I understand the work we've been doing for the past five years with the plastic industry, the foundation, and all that good stuff. But very specific, when you add in new grates, did you increase the sweeping of streets to pick up the trash that built up in each of those grates? Did we do that?
I don't think we've had a
I don't think we've had a conscious policy to increase the sweeping of streets. And as you know, the activity level of street sweeping is set as part of the budget, the funds that we set aside for street sweeping services. So one of the things that, you know, we would need to look at is, what is funding available to increase those services to get that trash off of those drains? One thing that is, could be considered, is that we have not adjusted the stormwater pollution abatement fee since 1993, and a portion of that fee is eligible to use for street sweeping services. So that might be something that we would want to examine as part of the budget process.
Who pays for that fee?
Residents.
Okay. Now, before we get there, shouldn't we understand which grates, which gutters are building up most trash? I mean, where do you see the highest levels of trash? Can anyone at this table be in a, what would it take for us to get to that point to understand that? What would it take?
Councilmember, actually, we do have a study, because as you know, off of the 34,000 catch basin that we have, Bureau of Sanitation cleansed them three, four times a year. So we did conduct a study to identify the entire city in three zones, high trash, moderate, and low. So I have that study, and I would be happy to share that with you. And our deployment of the technology has started with the high trash, and then we are moving to median, and then the low trash. So we have that study. So I know, based on my catch basin cleaning, what are the land uses, in what part of the city that are generating the most trash. I have that data.
You have that data?
Yes, in a study, yes.
And can you compare that to the schedules of cleanup at these particular corners and intersections?
We are working with Bureau of Street Services, Mr. Ron Olive. We have been sharing back and forth this information, just to make sure that if there are changes that needed to be done on the posted streets for the street sweeping, we are not there yet, but we have started.
Well, so you're not there yet. That's why we still see the buildup today. When do you think that'll be implemented?
I am working with, and I'm hoping, as I think, as the CIO indicated, the Councilmember, this Bureau of Street Services do require, you know, resources, you know, because it costs a lot of money, as you know. We're talking about, I don't know, in excess of $40 million just for street sweeping citywide. So we need to provide them resources for them to change their schedule. And stormwater fees, one area among other fees.
Okay, I see. It's a lot more complicated than we can discuss in three minutes, which I'm over my time, I understand. But we'll follow up, and I really, really believe that's a critical issue, because there's nothing, we need to strengthen the confidence of the elected, of those who voted for this proposition, and if all they see is dirtier streets and unclean water bodies, it's gonna be all for nothing.
Actually, Councilmember, one point, I am bringing back to the City Council what we call mikla, and that mikla is going to be by more street sweepers, approximately some 30 street sweepers and some 10, what we call back trucks to clean up the catch basin and the streets. So that I would be bringing back to the City Council.
Great. Thank you.
Let's stop.
Okay. Mr. Cardenas.
I think it's important that we explain to the voters and the taxpayers where we stand and what Prop O is going to be able to mitigate and help. What is the basis or basic number-one issue, the reason why Prop O came into existence, to do what? My time, please.
In my understanding, was water quality, Councilmember.
Sorry.
To comply with the stormwater mandates, TMDLs.
Can you paint a picture for the people of Los Angeles, one simple example of something that might be in their neighborhood that this would actually help with?
Yes. For instance, you know, in the neighborhood, when people put trash on the streets, and when it rains and goes to the Los Angeles River, we have a mandate to reduce that trash by 10% per year to zero in 10 years, which is 2014. And with the three-pronged approach that I mentioned earlier, outreach, use of technology, and enforcement, we are meeting those mandates.
Now, even though, be it a mechanic in their backyard, or somebody sweeping their plastics and just leaving it out in the gutter, and it rains and it goes in, or a business that happens to look over their shoulder and put a barrel of chemicals down there, the city somehow, some way, is still responsible to answer to higher levels of government for the actions that don't come from city employees, but actually come from our constituents, correct?
That is correct, sir.
So somehow, some way, we have to figure out ways in which we can go ahead and mitigate this down to zero over 10 years?
Yes.
Okay. Now, which leads to my, the main and last point I want to make. Of the Proposition O, how much money was passed by the voters in Proposition O?
$500 million.
$500 million. Now, with state help and hopefully federal help, et cetera, how much, give me a round figure to the nearest few hundred thousand, few hundred million dollars, how much we hope to leverage with Proposition O by the time we're done with the Proposition O? I said hope. I didn't say we have a guarantee. There's a lot of U.S. senators and congressional members and governors and legislators who say that they care about this issue, but really, the people or the organizations that have to deal with it on a day-to-day basis is us, local cities and counties. So what I'm saying is, potentially, how much could we hope to leverage on that if the federal government and the state government actually come through with some, at least moderate, support for us to do more work?
Councilmember, as I indicated, that if we get one-third, if we get one-third, we have done a good job.
You mean to get another couple hundred million dollars on top of our 500 million?
Yes, leveraging our money.
But if we were to believe, for example, all the people running for president or what have you in the coming months, you would think that Washington was probably gonna shower us with billions of dollars to handle this multi-billion-dollar problem, right? I said if you would, we would believe the rhetoric.
Yes.
Okay. No, that's an honest answer, because in every election, and when you listen to people who run for governor in California or run for president of the United States, one of the number-one words that comes out of their mouth is "environment," and how they care about the environment. But the reason why I'm having this dialogue with you is because this is not rhetoric. And I want to take this moment to thank Jan Perry for taking the lead on the council, and President Garcetti, and the other council members for putting the rhetoric aside and working out something that was, the voters agreed with us, that we need to fix our local environmental problems when it comes to our drains and this stuff going out to the ocean, et cetera, and all the other bad things that happens when that happens. And the bottom line is, I want to thank the voters for entrusting us with this, and I wish, and I would hope, that we could leverage this $500 million by two or threefold to a total of a billion, or a billion and a half, or $2 billion. Based on the rhetoric, that should happen. But unfortunately, the rhetoric flies hot and heavy, and at best, we're probably gonna hopefully get a couple hundred million dollars in help so we can fix our neighborhoods and our local environmental problem. And the last thing I want to point out is, I think it's important for people to understand that what we're going to do is a lot. But unfortunately, the problem is in the billions for us to fix everything that we can identify over the next 10 years. We hope that the voters will stick with us and see, and when we prove to them that we did well with this $500 million, but unfortunately, it's not the last $500 million that we need to commit to fixing this problem. It's a problem that's bigger than $500 million, and I expect that we will do a good job with that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks.
Thank you very much. I was just wondering, on looking at the whole issue of the trash and going into the storm drains, we're getting ready to start looking at our community plans, and I'm just wondering whether you've done any assessment to determine whether certain kinds of activities, whether schools, fast-food restaurants, drive-thru, are any of those kinds of things more of a potential for trash in the storm system than any other kind of business? Because we see what appears to be problems, but we don't know if there's any correlation of what you might see going into the stormwater system.
Councilmember, not a specific studies regarding land uses and businesses. I don't have a specific data, but obviously, if just, you know, going and finding out, you know, the fast-food areas and the surrounding land uses to fast-food area and restaurants do present a problem for us as far as trash being disposed by the citizen on the streets. But I don't have a specific, you know, study that could, you know, point to that, that certain, you know, businesses create more trash.
Yeah, because one of the things that would be helpful for us, because, you know, people have an automatic reaction to recycling centers, or they'll see a fast-food with the trash can overflowing, and the issue we're just trying to figure out as we go through the community plan process, and in fact, on our specific plan in Crenshaw, they, basically, the community asked for no more drive-through restaurants, not only the eyesore, but the health issues, but also the unsightly appearance of some of them. And we're just trying to get an idea as we begin to go through it, whether there are issues that we've assessed above ground that might be causing more of their share of problems that you see going through our system.
Right. I would say the single most for trash specifically is the human poor behavior. So if we could outreach and make every one citizen in the city to be a little bit more responsible for what they do, it goes a long way, you know. So outreach and increasing awareness would be one, specifically for trash, and providing a number of, you know, trash cans in the, or transit corridors, so people have access.
So outreach and education in the general community, that, what I guess goes hand in hand with what goes in our trash cans, is educating people, what doesn't go into the storm drain system?
Correct. That's what we are doing, Councilmember, every year, going to schools, going to the business improvement districts, going to the different, you know, neighborhood councils, identifying, you know, that if they could help us with the change of behavior of some of our citizens.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. And our last speaker is Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. When you asked that question there, I've worked with the QRS, that's Quick Service Restaurants, if I believe is the correct name for fast-food. One of the things that I want to do, Mr. Parks, is get permission for them to put a trash can in their front so that they could help, because it's people who put trash on the street. It's not, anybody at the center table ever litter? Huh? No, we don't litter. And if we should, we should pick up more. But somebody finds their way to put it on the street. And then one of the problems is, is some of the materials in there, they have certain papers that need to have wax or whatever to keep it warm, so there's a conflict, because some straight paper will just dissolve in water on that issue there. But I think if we could have a little more help for the city attorney's office, I know I'll meet him this afternoon. There's an issue that I have to try to lower the fee for fining people for littering, so we could be enforcing the littering a little more, and encourage shopkeepers, like you see in those old movies where they put their apron on and sweep the sidewalk, sweep the gutter. That lessens your load there. But there was a problem on placing trash cans in the street due to the liability issues that would relate to that, or whether they violate the Viacom contract. So, thank you.
Thank you. And we do have one speaker card on this. Ida Talala, if you'd like to come forward and ask the council.
Council President and--
Hold on one second. Make sure the microphone's on. Go ahead, please.
Council President and Councilmembers, I, my name is Ida Talala, and I'm with the Echo Park Advisory Board, as well as, I have founded a trash abatement project called Echo Park Tap to address some of the issues that you all have spoken so eloquently about. And as I stand here, I am extremely encouraged by what I have not only heard here, but what I have learned from the Prop O staff, the stormwater protection. And I have worked with Sharam Karagani over the last few months, and I have learned a great deal, and I have been able to take that then to the community and share with them. And I think one of the reasons I've been able to share is that that process has been so very transparent, and that has been an important factor. I hope that this spirit will continue, that the ideas that you all have shared here will be taken forth and worked upon, because every one of them is important. Council District 13 helped us stop a feather bed mattress that was torn and stripped, billowing through Montana some four or five blocks in an instant, and that prevented it from going to stormwater. We were able to sweep up rubber bands that would have gone into the storm drain, and we have asked for temporary trash cans for all events, so that it doesn't go into the storm drains. And again, it takes the effort of all of you and people in the community. Thank you so much for all of the work done.
Thank you, Ida. We need tens of thousands of Idas around the city to help us remember all of our behavior is where this pollution starts. So thank you so much. And with that, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. If there's no objection, we'll send those forth with. Thank you all very much. Next item, please.
Item number 24 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, item 24.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Mr. Simon to come up to the table, our city AIDS coordinator, and to give us a little brief overview of this particular issue in the sense of research, but also to touch on possibly where the most need is for this type of research.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember. Stephen Simon, city AIDS coordinator. As we approach 40 million people worldwide living with HIV and AIDS, I'm glad to see this microbicide resolution before you today by Councilmembers Parks and Rosendahl. We concur with the CLA analysis and the Intergovernmental Relations Committee's support of these federal bills. The bills would amend the Public Health Services Act to facilitate research and development of microbicides, and require coordination among federal agencies to do so. They were initially introduced in 2005 by Representative Shays and Senator Corzine. Senator Corzine has left of the Senate, but Representative Shays's office says they plan to reintroduce in 110th Congress. Microbicides, what are they? They have the potential to be the greatest protection against HIV and AIDS developed so far. Their development and widespread availability could have an incredible effect on the city's efforts to fight the epidemic. Microbicides are gels or creams that a person can apply to openings in their own body to at least significantly reduce the transmission of HIV and other sexually transmitted diseases. Currently, 60 to 80 products are in the pipeline, but only five have made it to large-scale Phase II trials. It's feasible that one could be licensed by the end of the decade. Microbicides are particularly important for slowing infection rates among women. Globally, women, mostly women of color, make up half the HIV epidemic. In Los Angeles, women only make up 13% of the epidemic, but a decade ago, women were 5% of the epidemic. That's 150% increase, and most of that increase was among women of color. With microbicides, women do not have to solely depend upon their male partner using a condom, and quite frankly, the same is also true for many men. And microbicides are the only medical protection against HIV that allows for conception. So people trying to conceive a child or who have personal beliefs against contraception could still protect themselves from HIV. We, the City AIDS Coordinator's Office, have dedicated our last, two of our last three World AIDS Day conferences to microbicides, including our 2006 partnership with researchers at UCLA, who are already on the cutting edge of this development. By supporting these bills, you will help speed their passage, and by speeding their passage helps speed the development of microbicides, which are really a primary key to slowing and eventually stopping this epidemic. So please support the Microbicide Development Act.
Mr. Simon, would you explain in the sense of, is there insufficient funding to get all of these products through the system, or are the ones that have been approved, there's insufficient funding to get them to the market? What is really the slowdown or the issue?
Councilmember, the main strength of this bill is coordinating various federal agencies to actually work together and make it a top priority. It's been a fairly low priority. There have been studies going on for years internationally, but only one major pharmaceutical company in the United States, which is Gilead Sciences, has actually put it formally in their, you know, in their development track, research and development track. It just needs to be a much higher priority because of the massive effect it could have on millions of people. I do believe funding is there, and there seems to be much more coordination and a much higher priority on this kind of work.
Is the reason for the lack of, say, interest of the pharmaceutical companies, is that based on the high degree of cost for the R&amp;D and development? Because it would appear that once developed, there'd be a significant population that would have an interest in purchase. So is that where the slowdown is?
Well, when it comes out of the end of your questionnaire, I think pharmas are most likely to argue the cost of research and development is also tied to the cost of marketing, which unfortunately, we don't know is necessarily the best way to spend that kind of money. But the bottom line is, the public needs to know these things are available when they come out, and the public needs to use them. We're still trying to teach people 20 years in to use condoms. So there is an argument to be said there, that if you come up with this incredible product, that people still won't use it. that people still won't use it. So we spent a lot of time with researchers locally, in particular, in Los Angeles and also in San Francisco, to talk about if we had one available, how would you really roll it out to the public? How would you really get it into people's hands? It's a tough question, and hasn't been answered yet.
And then for, as far as the thumbnail of what the condition of the city's issue dealing with AIDS, the AIDS population, where are we today?
There are about 60,000 people within the county of Los Angeles who are still alive and HIV positive. A little more than half of them are within the city. Our city's primary energy is around prevention. We don't do care and treatment, that's what county health does. We do prevention, and this would be a huge prevention mechanism for us. So this could really, really stop the spread of HIV. Currently, we're seeing it expand in particularly communities of color, both men and women, both gay and straight, mostly in south and east sides and central Los Angeles, and that that really needs to change.
So you're telling us basically that AIDS has no boundaries in a sense of color, age, ethnicity, as it relates to this universal problem throughout the United States, but particularly in the city of Los Angeles?
Absolutely, we keep talking about how this will impact the world, particularly women in Africa, which is wonderful. It's a wonderful thing we should make a position on. But here in Los Angeles, it's affecting people, like I said, of every race. We put up a series of billboards that say HIV is a black disease, HIV is a Latino disease, HIV is an Asian disease, HIV is a women's disease. We need to all believe it can impact us, and again, by using microbicides, I think it actually could really improve the situation for everybody, men and women.
Thank you very much, and I'd ask colleagues for an aye vote on this issue. Certainly is a need for funding in the research, but it could end up being, as Mr. Simon said, the greatest preventive aid that would be made available.
Thank you, our next speaker is Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Parks, for your leadership in putting this motion forward, and it was an honor for me to second that motion. Steve, let me ask you this. Where is AIDS now spreading in LA? You said the south and the east, explain that.
That's where it's growing most quickly. It's growing mostly in, actually African-American men and Latino men are the largest growth in terms of raw numbers.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
In terms of raw numbers, African-American men and Latino men have the largest growth in terms of HIV infection.
Why is that?
Most infections. You know, that's not a simple question. The easiest piece I could say is, 15 to 20 years ago when we started developing systems to fight the epidemic, the community that was most impacted tended to be white gay men, who did a wonderful job of organizing around changing the face, changing the response to the epidemic. As the epidemic moved into communities of color, issues of homophobia and racism, quite frankly, I think really slowed the process of getting it in people's heads that they could be impacted as well. The image that this was a white gay male disease was just false, unfortunately. And then we've gotten this divide and conquer mentality, where we say it's black women, or white men, or gay, or straight, and we just need to stop that and say we need to all protect ourselves, and we could actually stop this. And simply enough, HIV is a totally preventable disease. We could stop it entirely in its tracks.
Now, women of color are getting it as well? You said men first.
Absolutely, we see some of that coming through. Our prison system is a piece of that. We still don't have condoms in the jails. We have bills that we've recommended support of at the state and federal level. So men aren't becoming, one, infected in jail or prison and then coming home to their male or female partners, quite frankly. That's one high mode of transmission.
Is anybody in the country dealing with the prison issue?
Absolutely, we've got, we do have bills actively on the state and federal level. At the state level, Assemblymember Diemali has a bill. At the federal level, we've got testing bills and condom bills that we're addressing. We're trying to test, we still don't test the people in prisons.
And if you had your druthers, what would you like to see the legislation be, and how would it directly impact prisons?
The micro, oh, that, specifically that or the microbicide?
No, no, stay with the condoms first, and those bills.
Everyone that enters a jail or prison in the United States should routinely have an HIV test when they come into jail and a routine test when they leave, so we could tell who's positive when they come in, they can get their care and treatment, we know who becomes positive while they're there, and that there's some kind of partner notification. I would not make it absolutely mandatory. I would allow an opt-out. Quite frankly, that's mostly for political reasons. I don't believe most people would opt-out. So it's, there's an efficacy that comes when you write the bill that way. And it just needs to become, become the system and the norm. And the argument that our governments do not want to see a system where they find out people become positive inside because they have to pay for it is just unconscionable.
Would you suspect that a significant amount of women of color who get HIV, get it from their male partners, who have been in the criminal justice system?
Absolutely, the rates we've seen are at least five times that of normal population.
So, any woman watching this program, if she has a male friend of sorts that is in the criminal justice system, the first question she should ask is, did you have any body fluid exchange with another male in the prison?
And they should start thinking about and actively being safe in their relationship. And right now, condoms are the number one way to do that.
Condoms are the only way to do that? The gel business here, how long will this take before we get this off the shelf and into people's hands?
In an ideal world, probably four, four or five years. They're saying possibly by 2010, but I think it'll be a little longer.
Is there any opposition to it?
Absolutely not, I mean, it's a wonderful product. Question is, does it work well? And can you make a product that works for both men and women? And that we can get people's hands cheap? It's gotta be really affordable.
Yeah, you know, the county jail is just a stone throw away from City Hall. I've been through there a couple of times. And in the general population of the prison, there's no condoms allowed. Is there anything we can do in our level to stop that? Because that is creating HIV infections and is being brought out of the prisons and given to their partners. What can we do at our level about that?
Absolutely, I mean, it's a county facility in the jail system. We have, through my office, made known our concerns that we'd like to see condoms in the entire population and other prevention mechanisms for both men and women. And, you know, we don't have jurisdiction there, but quite frankly, the voice of this body saying it's a high priority, I think would carry quite a bit of weight.
Can we put together a piece of supportive legislation? Would you draft that for us that we can take to my colleagues here?
I'll draft some language and send it your way.
Colleagues, this is a very serious piece of legislation. I think it's great that Mr. Parks focused on it. Many of you know that hundreds of thousands of people in this country have died, and literally millions across the planet have died of AIDS. I lost my first lover, Christopher Lee Blauman, to AIDS in January of 95. And in memory of him and everybody else, we need to have more prevention programs, more awareness programs, and more therapy programs. Thank you for your leadership, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, thank you for your comments, and Mr. Parks, and Steve, thank you for your outreach. I know we talked about it at World AIDS Day, where you, along with the County of Los Angeles and Dr. Jonathan Feely, put everybody together at the Dorothy Chandler to remind people the fight is still on here, and the awareness is so important, especially for communities of color. So I just want to appreciate and call on me or any of our staffs of what we could do to advance the cause of the fight against AIDS/HIV. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Han.
Thank you, again, I really want to thank all of you for bringing this forward as a piece of legislation that we can really get behind as, from the city of Los Angeles. And I think a couple of things that you said really struck me. One was, we can actually stop HIV/AIDS in its tracks. It is a purely preventable disease. I think that is really a statement that we really should all hang on to, and then do what we can to prevent it and to stop it. And the other thing that is interesting to me about the microbicides that I think is important is that it empowers women. This is a discovery, a revelation, that can empower women. And as you said, so many women are becoming infected because of their male partners either who haven't protected themselves or they're unaware that they've been engaged in other activity that could put them at risk. So, you know, anything that we can do that takes a woman's life and puts it back in her own hands, and she does not have to be at the mercy of a man in her life, I think is important. And I think that's, this discovery, I think, will really help do that. And everything we can do to empower women, and again, get them to take care of their own health in the way that they can, particularly, it's interesting that this could be used so that a woman could still conceive without putting her health at risk. And that's a choice that women shouldn't have to make, whether to put their health at risk or to conceive. And so I think this does that. So I'm, I think it's important that we, as Los Angeles, get behind this legislation and support it and do every good thing we can to make, give more emphasis to this kind of research and development, which could ultimately help stop AIDS in its tracks. Thank you for bringing this before us.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Han. We can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 33, called special for cards from the public.
Okay, I'd like to ask for public comment. Ben Resnick to come forward, and then Jim Nguyen. Mr. Resnick? So, Ben Resnick here. Why don't we hold that on the desk for a moment? If not, we will come back to it and pass on. Next item, please.
Number 55 was called special by council member Smith.
Okay, Mr. Smith, item 55.
We have some issues with this. I ask that the Bureau of Engineering and Planning Department please come forward. Mr. Yu, is planning still here? Okay.
I think Emily Gable is supposed to come down on this item too.
I think we can probably solve the matter with you, Edmund. First of all, this is a problem with a land use in my district, and I have to ask, are the conditions that were set forth met in the tract map approval?
Engineering just realized that because of the zone change for this property expired, so one of the conditions has not been met because of that.
That would be condition S1 sub H-
That's correct.
Has not been met. Okay, and also that the lot, that each lot in the tract comply with the width and area requirements of the zoning ordinance, and since the zoning ordinance has expired, we now then need to send this back and have this resolved between you and the planning department on the zone case, correct?
That's correct, yeah. We are recommending the council to disapprove the final map at this time, and we will try to work with the applicant to come up with a new zone change approval. And then when that is done, then we can send the final map forward again to the city council for approval.
Okay, and this, you've cleared this with the city attorney as for the timeframes that this has to be done by? This goes on until November?
I believe it's by November, is that correct?
Yeah, the final, the tentative tract map is good until November of this year. So if the applicant can work for another zone change approval before that, then yeah, the final map can still come forward for the city council.
Very good, thank you. Mr. President, based on this information, I ask that we disapprove this tract map record H-Day and refer back to the engineering and zoning to come back with a final zone case.
Great, all right. Well, we'll go ahead and open the roll on that recommendation. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That denial is approved. Mr. Weiss, I believe, wanted us to move number four that was held on the desk. I'll go ahead and do that for him. If there's no objection, please open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And we can come back to item 33 now. Got two public speaker cards, Ben Resnick and Jim Nguyen. I'll let Mr. Nguyen go first, he's the property owner. Mr. Nguyen?
My name is Jim Nguyen. I own an 18-unit apartment complex in the subject area. I bought the property in 1976. I've lived there in one way, in one of my units for 27 years. This property has existed in its R3 current zoning since 1949, approximately 58 years. My vacancy rate is nil because of its proximity to convenient public transportation and the Hollywood freeway, three bus stops within 150 feet and a metro subway stop at Universal City less than three quarters of a mile away. I want to preserve my right to develop this property with additional rental units in the future as allowed under the current R3 zoning. Past references have been made that additional development would have a negative traffic impact in this area. Having lived in this area for 25 years, I can attest that any traffic problems we have can be attributed entirely to commuter traffic passing through the Coenga Pass. In closing, I'd like to say that my property is ideal for infill development because it sits adjacent to major transportation corridors with buses and metro rail transportation in close proximity. And it is only minutes away by automobile to downtown Los Angeles, Hollywood, Beverly Hills, and the Valley. Because it is adjacent to commercial development on Coenga Boulevard, it is an ideal buffer between commercial and single-family dwellings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Ben Resnick?
Members of the council, my name is Ben Resnick, and I bring this matter to your attention for a very simple reason. This was initiated not by a council officer or a neighborhood, this was initiated by the planning department trying to create what they say is consistency. However, it's going in the wrong consistency way. I thought the city was trying to increase density in transportation corridors. This is the Coenga Pass. This property of Mr. Nguyen is 100 feet from three bus stops, and it's about half a mile from the transit stop, the subway stop. His zone has been R3 since 1950, for 57 years. Why would we be downzoning property at this point in time that has apartments on it? His building is 60 years old. In the next five to 10 years, someone's going to want to redevelop it. If you downzone it to the RD 1.5, what will happen is, no one will be able to build apartments there. It'll all be condominiums, because at RD 1.5, the density is not enough to support rental products. You're going to lose rental product. So all the R3 properties that are in the Coenga Pass that are the subject of this are going to basically be today legislated out of the rental housing market. All new development, there's going to be condos. If that is the direction we're going in, then I suggest it's the wrong direction, because the Coenga Pass, while it has a lot of through-traffic in it, the reality is, it is a transportation corridor. So what we're asking you to do today is, Mr. Nguyen has filed for a batching case, So what we're asking you to do today is, Mr. Nguyen has filed for a batching case, that is, to bring the planned designation up to the R3 zone. You know, the city is not manufacturing any more R3 zones these days. I don't see the council creating new multifamily zones. Here we are, getting rid of one. So, this zone, which has been there for fifty-seven years, has an apartment building on it, should not be downzoned. The only reason it's being downzoned is because the planning department says the planned designation shows that it's for single family. That's been like that for thirty-five years. It's a wrong designation.
Thank you.
Let's not compound the mistake. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Resnick. I close our public comment on this. Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask Frank Kwan, the city planner for the area, to explain, members, exactly why this is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Good morning, council members. Frank Kwan, hearing officer with the city planning department. This is, in fact, a cleanup process, or a leftover set of parcels, and they amount to about twenty-five parcels within the Coanga Pass. The area is under two separate plan areas. We have the Sherman Oaks Studio City, Toluca Lake, Coanga Pass plan area, as well as the Hollywood plan area. And, thank you. And these are the parcels that are involved here. It's a unique area in that we have the Coanga Pass, we have the Hollywood Freeway, and on either side of the Hollywood Freeway, there's a couple of frontage roads, Coanga West and Coanga East. Beyond that, we have some peripheral hillside streets that are very limited in narrow in scope, and the topography, which is quite steep. Getting back to the focus of the case, we're actually initiating this particular case because of general plan consistency. And if you recall, back in the early eighties, and the focus still is consistency in itself, we're trying to become, make these parcels consistent with the general plan per the state requirements and the lawsuit that was settled back in the eighties. So again, this is an extension of that program. There's nothing more to it than that. And as far as the separate case that Mr. Resnick mentioned, there is a separate batching case requested, and in the hopper of our planning department, we will continue processing that. However, for today, the, what's on the table is really the general plan consistency issue, and we should probably look at the separate batching case at a later time. When is appropriate?
Mr. Kwan, thank you very much, members. This is, as explained by the city planner, the right thing to do. In the process, the applicant could go at another date, have it his focus, whatever he would see, considered by the planning department. But this is, again, in compliance with state law, as it related to previous action by the state Israel land use.
That's correct.
I ask for an eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Yes. Thank you, Council President. I was out ill last week. I could not engage this during plum, but if I would have been there, these are the questions I would have asked of the staff. We understand that we have this consistency issue with AB two-eighty-three, but in the context of the city as a whole, and looking at the direction we're trying to establish, and what we could absorb higher densities because of the transit corridor, how does that, how does your recommendation fly? I mean, in terms of, how does it, how does it compare to that whole other tension? Because, yeah, I understand the council member of the district, Councilman Labange, wants this consistency issue, but aren't we also decreasing the capacity to build more housing and to absorb more facilities in transit corridors if we follow along with this?
Well, the answer to that, there's several different points I'd like to bring out.
Please hold my time.
I'm sorry. First of all, this isn't the, this isn't the standard transit corridor that we've all seen along major highways. The streets in this area are quite narrow. Coanga East and Coanga West are both right-of-ways that are probably less than fifty to seventy feet, and it's variable in this situation. And in the future, it could probably be widened no more than so many other feet, but it's a rather narrow corridor. Because of the narrowness in the streets feeding onto Coanga East and West, we probably will not recommend any higher density than the low-medium. Although our city policy does look at the major transit corridors as places to apply density, this probably would not be one of them.
Okay, and I say this for the record, in that we, as a city, keep talking about we don't have housing, that an average home now in L.A. is six, five, six-hundred thousand. We're looking at opportunities here to increase capacity for housing, yet we're not allowing for it because of all the specifics that you're indicating in this particular corridor. So, I just want to make sure that we understand as a body that sometimes we have to step up and allow for housing, although it might not be the most popular thing to do with the surrounding stakeholders. But at this point, what you're saying is that the roadways are very narrow.
That's correct.
And the topography is such that to create more housing would exacerbate the congestion.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's a very unique situation. And again, the focal point of this particular case initiated by the department was to attain zoning consistency. So it's a different mission.
Right, and my own subjectivity there is that the planning department, in the past ten, fifteen years, has a track record of focusing on certain parts of the city and not on others. So the consistency issue, to me, has been very selective, and that can be proven on how the work program has evolved over the past fifteen years. You can chart that out, and I can show you all the motions that were fulfilled and all the motions that were not. So I have a hard time with that very notion, although legally, I know we have to follow up and fulfill our commitment to the courts. But it's not as if the planning department did this in an even-handed way, and it shows in how communities have evolved. But that's my own subjectivity on that matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. I just want to let you know, on a positive note, just across the street is the former Hanna-Barbera site, which is a mixed-use, densely populated construction project, under construction right now. These are hillside streets that are, that this corridor, right between where you, Mr. Smith, sit and I sit, the streets are about as wide as this area right here, maybe from post to post. So you know the challenge that's there. So we look forward to the continued work of the planning department, and again, I ask for an eye vote, and thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Please prepare the roll on this item. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved.
Mr. President, the ordinance goes over for one week.
Okay. It says an ordinance that'll go over one week for a second reading, due to less than twelve council members being here. Please call the roll for the special meeting.
Cardenas Grohl, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosanelle, Smith, Weiss, Weston, Zane, Garcetti, eleven members present in accord, Mr. President.
Okay, first items.
Two items are before council. They're both items for which public hearings have been held, and committee reports have been submitted and distributed to the council members.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call them special? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on these two, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Go back to the regular meeting. Next items.
Do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Sure, let's go ahead and clear the desk.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There's an excuse on the desk. Councilmember Grohl requests to be excused Wednesday, March seventh, to leave at ten forty-five for city business. That meets council policy.
She is excused.
And that clears the desk for closed session.
Okay, we'll now go into closed session for legal matters before the jurisdiction of the council. If we take any actions requiring public announcements, we will do that back in open session. So we will be back in open session shortly. Thank you, and if we could clear the council chambers. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney? Or Madam Clerk?
First item, Mr. President's item number fifty-six, and that settlement in the case of Elvis Poncet de Leon versus City of L.A. in the amount of six-hundred twenty-five-thousand dollars.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is fifty-seven, and that settlement in the case of Heather Bell and Gloria Ortega versus City of Los Angeles. The total amount is one-twenty-five, and that's a one-hundred for Heather Bell and twenty-five thousand for Gloria Ortega.
Okay. Anybody wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Next item is six, item sixty, and that's a judgment in the case of Jose Hernandez et al versus City of L.A. et al, and the amount is one-hundred thirty-three thousand ninety-two dollars and sixty-five cents.
Okay. Anybody wishing to be heard on open session? Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And last case?
Last item is item sixty-two, and that is settlement in the case of Ames Construction et al and Utility Audit Company and Daniel K. Wong et al, and that's in the amount of one million eight sixty-four, one seventy-six, twenty-nine.
All right, anybody wishing to be heard in open session? Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on all those, if there's no objection. Now it's time for announcements. Colleagues, any announcements? Do we have any adjourning motions today, colleagues? Going once, twice? No adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the, do we have adjourning motions, colleagues? Yeah, okay. If I can ask everybody, please to rise for adjourning motions.
Thank you. I'd like us to adjourn today in memory of Mike Matsumia, who passed away early this morning. He's the father of a friend of mine, Suzanne Allen, who is the associate publisher of the Random Links newspaper in San Pedro. Mike was a second-generation Japanese-American who spent part of World War II in an internment camp, missing his high school graduation. In two thousand and two, he was finally honored and presented his diploma by his high school in Oxnard. He was retired from the L.A. Community College District and lived for many years in Venice, Culver City, and he is survived by his wife of sixty years, Tomy, two sons, Don and Terry, his daughter Suzanne, and two granddaughters. The services are pending.
Thank you. Second up, Mr. Rosendahl. Other adjourning motions, colleagues? Ms. Perry.
I'd like to adjourn in memory of Mrs. Irene Johnson, who was a courageous woman and a successful businesswoman, who for the past thirty years worked tirelessly in the Janley Dress Shop, in which she co-owned. When not working in her dress shop, she was a devoted member of the Sokka Gakai International, or SGI, a Buddhist lay organization, in which she served as a Los Angeles area leader. As an area leader, she worked continuously for peace throughout the world and for the development of the potential of so many young people. She is survived by her daughter Michelle, son-in-law Dwayne, and granddaughters Karina and Autumn. Her services were held Saturday, February seventeenth, at SGI USA.
Thank you. And colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Nikki Backrack, who was a fellow classmate of mine in elementary school, the daughter of Bert Backrack and Angie Dickinson. She suffered from Asperger's Syndrome related to autism and took her life due to the torture that that disease caused her. She was somebody who loved astronomy and geology, somebody who loved kittens, somebody who was an incredible, happy voice for much of her life, but unfortunately, the terrible demons of Asperger's ultimately claimed her. But I know our thoughts are with her family and with Nikki in heaven. May she rest in peace. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.